The August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Our first order of business is the Honolulu Fire Department.
Good evening firefighter one Malama Custer to my left is Captain Chan to my right is firefighter three Oshiro. We're from the Makiki Fire Station Engine Three First Watch. We have incident statistics for July of two thousand and twenty-three. For fires, we had one structure fire. One wildland brush fire, two nuisance fires, one cooking fire and nine activated alarms with no fires. As far as emergencies go, we had a hundred and sixty emergencies. Six motor vehicle crashes and one hazardous materials incident. The Honolulu Fire Department has a fire safety tips and announcements. The fire safety tips are in regards to fires and fall prevention. Help ensure the safety of our esteemed elders implementing prevention and preparedness practices will promote independence and reduce frequency of injury or death from home fires and falls. You can learn more at honolulu.gov slash fire and life safety slash kupuna. Please stay in the kitchen when frying food and cooking on the stove top. Keep a lid nearby. If a pan of food catches fire, slide a lid over it and turn off the burner. Please remember the stove top and oven are not to be used for storage. Ensure working smoke alarms are installed properly. Bed shakers and strobe alarms are available for hearing or visually impaired occupants. Plan your escape from fire based on your abilities. Keep your exit routes clear. Ensure windows and doors open easily and practice your escape plan. When the alarm sounds, get outside and stay outside. Call nine one one from your safe meeting place using a mobile phone. If you're unable to evacuate shelter in place, stay nearby window and call nine one one. Exercise regularly to build strength and improve coordination and balance. Ask a doctor about appropriate physical exercise. Be aware of your surroundings, including uneven surfaces. Take your time when getting out of a chair or bed, stand and get your balance before you begin to walk. Review your medications with your doctor. Keep an updated list of medications, medical directives and emergency contacts posted on your refrigerator. That concludes the fire and safety tips and announcements. Do you have any questions?
Absolutely. Thank you very much for the report. Just checking if there's any questions, any questions from board members at this time. Board members online are reminded to use the raise hand function. Seeing no questions from board members. Oh, I didn't see that. Thank you very much. Janelle, you're recognized at this time.
Hi, this is a board member Fujinaka. I wanted to actually make a comment and say thank you to the Honolulu Fire Department and the City Council Honolulu for providing support through the Maui flyer fires. As I have also been present up in Maui for that time on behalf of the Silver Air Patrol. But thank you guys so much for that. Unfortunately, I'm not there at the moment. I'm in a national conference and thank you to you guys' support and all of you guys at HFD for doing such a good work.
Thank you. On behalf of the Honolulu Fire Department, we appreciate your comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to recognize Tom Heinrich at this time.
Thank you Chair. This is a good general comment, but one very much in the Maui context. And that is, two days ago, I received a call from a woman who I would estimate to be in her sixties or seventies on the Eva side of Punch Bowl. She gave me a prospect address. And the point of this is that she was to her core afraid of potential wildfire right across the street there on the slopes of Punch Bowl. Nothing we can do except be very vigilant, et cetera. But it was fascinating to hear the fear in her voice and a reminder to all of us to provide that vigilance, especially because of unfortunately what has happened on Maui. So I just wanted to convey that because it does give a heightened sense of fear, but also questions of what can we do, et cetera. And the only good answer for her anyway was simply be aware. And if you have any questions, any doubts or whatever, to call for assistance. So just wanted to pass that on because a lot of folks are responding with that heightened sense of concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, seeing no further questions at this time, thank you very much for your report. And we look forward to seeing you again next month.
Thank you very much.
All right. With that, we're going to move on to the Honolulu Police Department.
Hi, this is Sergeant Wang from Honolulu Police Department. This is the statistics for July, two thousand and twenty-three. Motor vehicle thefts are twelve. Burglaries are four. Thefts thirty-nine. UEMVs is twelve. Assaults are nine. Sex assault is zero. Graffiti is one. And drugs is four. That's pretty much it for the reported incidents. Safety tips, we have been getting a lot of reports of credit card skimmers. So something to think about is when you use your credit cards, make sure you can kind of check where the device you're going to put in is, see if it's loose or whatever it is. Because usually it's just a covering they put on top of the regular credit cards. And sometimes you just, if it pries off, it's a bad sign. You can ask the teller to check for you too. And let's see. That's pretty much it. Unless you guys have any further questions.
Thank you so much for your report. You know, lately, one of the things we've been doing is spending quite a lot of time on the segment questions. So if you're a member of the public, feel free to ask any question in your mind. You came here tonight. Please do that. For board members, I do urge you to keep questions brief and pertinent to the board. The officers usually stay on a little bit later. So if it's something which is just of interest to you, please consider private messaging it or following up in terms of calling or sending an email. With that, I'll open up to questions from board members first. Janelle, you're recognized at this time.
Sergeant Wang, I want to thank you guys as well for HPD also getting involved in wildfires. I did have a question in regards to the encampments that are still on Peakoi. If you guys have had the opportunity to mitigate those issues with the homeless in the area.
Yeah, we have operations ongoing and I have some information to share. If you go online, the state actually operates a homeless.hawaii.gov website has a lot of resources available. For instance, for urgent nonviolent homeless concerns on Oahu, there's a call core hotline. It's eight oh eight seven six eight two six seven three. You can give that a call. And for like, try to help send social workers to certain areas that need attention. There's like homeless outreach. We have two within the area. One is operated by IHS. I believe that number is four four seven two eight six five. And is further down towards Kalisi is seven two three one four seven five. And apparently we do such a good job, the ACLU stepped in and sent a lawsuit. On July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, they filed a lawsuit against you can see it online, homeless residents file lawsuits challenging the city and county of Honolulu use of sweeps. And you can kind of read all the dirty details in there. It's not going to be easy solution. It's ongoing. And it's something that kind of everybody has to be on the same page together to get a practical solution. Because if we're doing one thing and let's say people like the ACLU step in and do something else, we're going to be spinning around in circles. And this is a very difficult social issue. If you look in California, they're pretty much screwed. Hopefully, we don't end up like that. But I'd also tell you, we can't arrest our way out of this thing. We need to, everybody be on the same page and work together so we can forge in one direction and take care of this thing. That's all I got.
Thank you Sergeant Wang and thank you to HPD again. You guys are doing an amazing job. Thank you.
I'll make check real quick. Yes, please go ahead.
Hi Sergeant Wang, I just wanted to bring to your attention, I'm guessing it already is in your attention, but I've been noticing recently increased drag racing activity on Tantalus Round Top. I can't say if there's any particular day. Is, I've seen more activity, but it usually is in the evening. I guess around from ten PM on. Just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Yeah, we do get calls and we do make checks. It's, it's, it's sometimes, it's really difficult to go up to that Round Top or Tantalus side. By the time we get there, they're all gone or we don't see pretty much anything, but we do make checks. If you see something, just call. We'll do our best. But these people gotta have good decision making. They screw up, they end up on the side of the cliff, which sometimes happens. But yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other questions from board members at this time? Seeing none, I recognize Tom Heinrich as we move into the public questions and concerns. Go ahead.
Thank you Chair. Just one slight correction for what Sergeant Wang said. You refer to homeless.hawaii.gov. It's actually homelessness. So homelessness.hawaii.gov. I'm looking also at the governor's website where there's instant links to a lot of other information and backing up the telephone numbers that you shared. So the easy way in is simply governor.hawaii.gov. So governor.hawaii.gov for a lot of that information. So appreciate your sharing that. My second is a comment. Unfortunately, because of the Maui wildfires, there has been, of course, a great effort of trying to gain donations and assistance in order to be able to ship that over to Maui. This past Thursday and Friday was a tremendous public turnout in delivering donations to the state capitol. And that delivery site or drop-off site being in front of Father Damien statue on Baritania or coming under the building. I say that both in acknowledgement to the many people who spent time to collect donations and deliver them. And then secondly, a little bit more tongue in cheek is that we had folks telling us that they took ninety minutes to come down Baritania from Pensacola to Father Damien. So it took a long time in line, et cetera. And in the hot sun, as we were helping, my quick response was, I gotta let folks know. It was our fault, not Chick-fil-A. So for the first time, we can let Chick-fil-A off, you know, in that respect. But a serious question, Sergeant Wang, I've noticed everything's been going fairly smooth in front of Chick-fil-A and anything to report otherwise from their opening and the initial operations. It seems okay so far. Thank you.
Yeah, as far as traffic goes, I guess everybody likes Chick-fil-A, but they have hired special duty to take care of stuff. Nothing seems out of the ordinary, but they're very popular.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm going to, we're going to continue with questions from people who aren't members of the board at this time. Claire is recognized.
Thank you Chair. Thank you Sergeant Wang. I notice regarding homelessness, there's been another migration. So Thomas Square Park and the corner of Baritania and Ward have filled up again. But I do understand it's a migratory situation and a non-threatening by and large. Just reporting that increase that you probably know about. Regarding the skimmers, I believe if you use the tap function with your card, you won't be affected. Is that correct?
You know, I, I won't say you can, because technology is always advances. It's like a game of cannon mouse, yeah? And basically, the tapping is a radio signal. And if they can develop the technology to pick up the radio signal and copy it, they can already copy the magnetic strip on your card. I don't think it's that much of a technological leap to copy the radio RF signal on your, on your card to do this stuff. So people are getting more clever, committing crimes. So we got to get more clever and protecting ourselves. Sorry.
Yeah, the crooks are always one step ahead of us, aren't they? And the Chick-fil-A thing, I've been there at least ten times and I haven't, in the drive-through and the walk-up, and I haven't really noticed any devastating problems. So I'm kind of glad for that. Okay, thank you Sergeant Wang. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much. I don't see any other hands raised at this time, but I did want to give anyone else in attendance an opportunity to ask a question if they attended for that purpose. Hearing none, now thank you very much for your report. Okay, so we're going to be moving next to the Board of Water Supply's general report and we'll hear from them again a little bit later for presentation. So I'll recognize Board of Water Supply at this time.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Michelle Harmon and I just have that general water room announcement tonight. So as a reminder, it's hurricane season through November thirtieth and it's essential that we're all prepared. Some tips that we'd like to share include, check that you make sure that you have a complete and current emergency kit. Store at least one gallon of water per day per person for at least fourteen days, plus water for your pets. And during an emergency, check in with media reports and other updates. And our last tip for this report, subscribe to honolulu.info. Board of Water Supply and other city agencies send information through this system. So there's a lot of great info on our website and that is www boardofwatersupply.com. And that's all I have for you right now and I can take any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much for your report. Any questions from board members at this time? Please go ahead.
This is Harris Nakamoto. Apparently, my home address is at nine two two Kinal Street. And I reported like two meetings ago about on Kinal perpendicular to the address of the road, like as if there's a water leak and it goes perpendicular right across. I wanted to see if there was any updating.
Okay. Hi Chair Ross, this is Kathleen Pahinui. We have Stephen Norstrom on with us tonight as well. And I believe Stephen addressed that question. Stephen, did we find out an answer on that Kinal Street?
I'm sorry, I could not understand what the, what the question was. It was very quiet. So I'm not sure what the question was at all. I couldn't hear. I still can't hear anything coming from the room. I can hear you clearly and Michelle, but I can't hear anybody in the
It had to do with that Kinal Street leak, remember? The board came back, Michelle gave us that it was a leak on Kinal Street and you were looking into it.
I'd have to double check. I'll have to get back. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm terribly sorry. We'll get back to you. Thank you. But we did get your question, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Anne Kathleen. I did get your email a while back. Your automatic response that you were off through August seventeenth. So I hope you didn't join us just for this presentation during a much
I sure did, just for you guys.
Well, thank you so much for your dedication. Any other questions from board members at this time? Seeing none, any questions from other attendees? Hearing none, I'm sure we'll hear from you folks in just a little bit. We're going to move on to community reports at this time. First off, we have the Makiki Lower Punch Bowl Tantalus Neighborhood Security Watch Report. Chuck.
Yes, can you guys hear me? Or on Zoom? Can you hear me?
Are you able to hear Chuck? I'm getting a thumbs up. Yeah, I think they can hear you. If you just project this way.
Yeah, thank you. I'll keep this as brief as possible. The Neighborhood Security Punch Bowl Neighborhood Security Watch Punch Bowl Makiki area. We're still in our education phase. So what we're doing is just going out in the community to educate people basically on how to stay safe in their houses and out on the street. That's our basic information that we're passing out. This is the first out of four phases. The other phases will be coming. I wouldn't say shortly, but it's coming. It's observation, patrol and communication. And I'll be able to explain that at a future meeting. So we basically are doing a lot of condos and churches. And we have an opportunity to be at the Makiki Open Market on Thursdays. We're probably going to do a booth there maybe once a month to start and just kind of get acquainted with the general public. We're also working on getting a presentation for Roosevelt High School. We're tailoring a program, a presentation for the high school students. And then we are also planning a leaders meeting for the Neighborhood Security Watch. So that's coming. We also are looking for volunteers. So if anybody is interested in being a volunteer, you can go, you can email us at makiki, P as in Paul, B, makikipb dot N S W at gmail dot com. Okay? We'd also like to give you a tip for this month. Being that there's going to be the holiday season coming and there's going to be a lot of porch pirates. You know, those people that go around and steal stuff from the front doors or front porches of many of their houses. We just want you to be aware that August, September, all the way up to January are going, these guys are going to be out there really prowling the area to steal your boxes if you leave them out there for any extended amount of time. So what we'd like to suggest is that you have somebody, your neighbor or somebody, a resident manager, if you're at a condo, especially if you're on a lower floor that's not secured as other floors are, if you're in a secure building. You know, work with them to have your boxes monitored. Okay, that's going to be really important because lately, when, one of the reports were, they have these culprits watching the FedEx or UPS trucks. And wherever they go, they just kind of follow behind. So they know exactly where these boxes are going to be dropped off. So all the more reason why we should be very vigilant in our taking care of your boxes.
All right. Thank you very much Chuck. I went ahead and shared that email in the, in the chat and I intend to include it in future agendas. That will make it easier in the future. Thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
The next report was the Oahu, yes, please go ahead. Sorry, questions first, questions and discussion.
Chuck, if, how can we have a post office keep picking it up? The post office is going to keep it safe until we get there. But let's say we pick it up and want to come back and get it. Can we leave it at the desk or something like that or we just don't pick it up?
Oh, you mean at the post office?
Yeah. Because they can walk in there too, right? Yeah.
I guess when you go in there, you have to show your ID though.
Yeah, I know, but you pick up your stuff and then you wander around. How do you make, you want to pick it up, but don't want to take it home right away? Can you leave it at the post office?
I'm not really sure.
Why don't we look into that? Because you know, all these Christmas presents coming, you hate to pick them up and then throw them in the car, you know, so if they would let us keep them there for a while. We can't keep it for long because of course they've got a lot of stuff coming. It's wondering if they have ways to get stuff.
I'm not sure, but I know that that would, that may be a liability issue for them too, right? If they hold it and something happens to it.
Yeah.
But I'll check myself and I'll get back.
Christmas coming, better mind.
Good question. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion from board members or any other attendees? Hearing none, I just want to tell you, I'm really glad to see this being a part of our reports now. This is something which was started here. The neighborhood board system has evolved. Chuck, thank you very much for wearing both hats.
Thank you for including us.
We'll include, we'll go to the Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization report. Fred Nakahara, who's no longer a board member, was playing this role. He wasn't able to join us. He was going to give us a little bit of report, remind us what the organization does. Please check your email for what Logan sent. There is information about what this organization does. And later in the agenda, we may choose to appoint someone for that role. So just wanted to put that on everyone's radar. And without further ado, it looks like we'll be able to move on to the Board of Water Supply presentation. They asked for about twenty to thirty minutes for the five-year rate schedule structure increase report. So without further ado, let's jump into it.
Good evening Chair Ross, board members and guests. My name is Mike Matsuo. I'm the land administrator here at Board of Water Supply. Thank you very much for having us here tonight to present our proposed water rates schedule. Joining me tonight from the Board of Water Supply is Manager Ernest Lau, Deputy Manager Erwin Kawata. And of course, you already saw Kathleen Pahinui pop in and she's accompanied by her staff, Michelle Harmon and Steve Norstrom. We also have on with us is program administrators, wrong, sorry, from our finance division, Joe Cooper and Jason Nikaido from our field operations division and also Barry Usugawa from our water resources division. So, okay, so let me share my screen so everybody can see what we're doing. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, so, kavaiola, very important, all life depends on water. You know, we're, we're an island state and so we can't really get our water from anywhere other than here. So we have to be very strong stewards of our freshwater, limited freshwater resources. It takes a pretty complicated and large system to deliver water to you every minute of every hour of every day. As you can see from this graphic, we have thirteen tunnels, five shafts, a hundred ninety-four wells with source pumps. We do need to treat some of that because of legacy contaminants. So there are thirteen treatment facilities. And that's before it all gets to these hundred seventy-two potable water reservoirs. These reservoirs help pressurize the system as well as provide fire protection when needed. We also have a hundred ninety-two booster pumps that all deliver water into twenty-one hundred miles of pipeline, which serves not only twenty-one thousand fire hydrants, but also a hundred seventy thousand services. So basically, what the Board of Water Supply does is we serve a hundred forty-five million gallons of water per day to one million people. It's important. It's important to note that the Board of Water Supply is a semi-economist agency of the city and county of Honolulu, which means we are not part of, well, we are part of the city, but we're not part of the state administration. We are governed by a seven-member board. We are funded solely by what we take in from water rates and we receive no funding from real property taxes. And again, this proposed, this is a proposed water rate structure that we're presenting to you tonight. It's not set in stone yet, but we wanted to get your input as to what you think about what the rates will be. And again, these rates only apply to water, not sewer. I know the bills come and you see sewer and water. So it's important to realize that this is only for water. Sewer rates are set or determined by the City Department of Environmental Services and approved by the City Council. Oh, also, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that any water rates that we do put out there is approved by our board. So this slide here shows you where the money goes that we collect, starting from the top and going clockwise. We have a capital improvement program, which is basically all the projects that we do to install new pipelines, new sources, new reservoirs, rehabilitate pipelines, pump stations and so forth. We pay part of that out of cash, which is thirteen percent or thirty-four point seven million. And then we also fund the capital program through bonds. And so we have to pay debt service and that will basically interest. So together, that amounts to about twenty-seven percent of the money that we collect. Another twenty-nine percent goes to employee salaries and health and retirement benefits. And then as you can see in the gray part, thirty-one percent or about eighty-six million dollars goes towards our operation and maintenance. And then electricity is about thirty-three million or twelve percent. And of course, there's a three-point formula, one percent of other stuff that we use it for. So when we did the last rate increase, which ran from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-three, we were able to put out a total of almost five hundred projects at a budget of a, more than Almost uh more than uh three-quarters of a billion dollars, as you can see there. Uh, then these are both uh planning and design projects as well as construction projects. Well, COVID nineteen, as you know, caused a lot of changes in our customer use um patterns. A lot of businesses shut down, so we, a lot of non-residential water usage went, went way, way down. And of course, when people stayed home more, the um customer usage at home, single-family homes, multi-unit homes. Um, we saw an increase in water use patterns as well. So what this resulted in is by, as you can see on this slide, is we saw um uh inflation, total inflation of twenty-one percent over a course of um. From two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-three. However, based on the last rate increase we did, we were only able to collect a revenue increase of twelve point five-three percent. So there was a eight percent difference between inflation and what we were able to collect and spend. So we, we did lose some purchasing power through that. Um, as far as the electricity goes, um, okay, so this is uh, let me talk you through it. So the top line shows, the purple line shows how much um kilowatt hours we actually use. Um, over the course of the, from July twentieth through May twenty-three, twenty twenty-three. And as you can see, we did uh cut back or we did reduce our energy usage. However, um, the energy cost factor that Hawaiian Electric charges, as you can see, went up, which is a green line, went up. Whereas as resulted in our monthly costs also going up. So basically in FY twenty twenty-three, which just ended on July, uh, Ju- Jul- June thirtieth. Um, electricity for us costs thirty-three million dollars, which is about almost six million dollars or twenty percent more than what we had budgeted. Excuse me, I'm kinda getting over a cold, so. My voice is a little funny, so I may need to sip water from time to time. And of course, everyone knows Red Hill. Um, you know, because of the, the, the issues with Red Hill, we're having to um put in monitoring wells. To get, collect information on the contamination and how does, and how it's moving and how it may impact the groundwater, uh, I prefer. And we also need to um uh put in exploratory wells to find new sources outside of the path of the contamination. And we're looking at replacing seventeen and a half million gallons per day of water, potable drinking water, well pumping capacity. Of course, undetermined in this scenario is what the full impact to water quality and supply will be due to the, the Red Hill issues. Impact to our operations and maintenance costs, cause we really don't know what's going on with the, the spill and what kind of effect it's having. And of course, we don't know if we'll ever be able to recover any costs from the Navy. So what we've, what we've done is we tightened our belt a bit. And what we did was uh we chose not to pass on any energy cost increases to our customers. And we deferred purchases of replacement vehicles and other equipment and also deferred less critical capital projects. And the benefit of this was basically we held to an approved, we weren't, we didn't have to raise the rates again during that five-year period between two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty-three. And despite the inflation that we were looking at, we were able to keep our operation and maintenance costs pretty flat. So, um, water rates, uh, setting water rates strategy is, is, is a balance basically uh between. Um, what we have to do, what we need to do in terms of our operations and maintenance. And, and trying to balance that against making sure that it, the rates are affordable for our customers. So that's always a um, a very difficult thing to do. So what this thing shows is how we plan to spend the money within the next few years and when we do the water rates. Oh, by the way, I did forgot to mention that the water rates will go from January first, twenty twenty-four to June twenty twenty-eight. Um, so this is what we're, we're spending it on. Um, so the, we have the, the little. Uh, blue triangle on the bottom is the Kalailoa uh seawater desalination plant. It's the first uh seawater desalination plant that we're building on the um seaward coast. Uh, that was on lands that we were able to acquire from the uh closure of the Barbersport Naval Air Station. Um, in the beginning parts of this um new, new um cycle, uh, we're, the monitoring exploratory wells that are due to the Red Hill. Um, will be there and then replacement sources a little later on throughout the years. We need, we need to design first and then, you know, build later. So that's, that's why it, it looks like that. Um, the security facility improvements, um, those are pretty stable across the five-year period. Again, these are um improvements to our fencing and those other things we need to secure our facilities. Um, then uh reservoirs again is, is very low except at the ending part when we build new reservoirs for Waiva. As you can see, it's in the later part of the, the schedule. Um, then we have pump renewal replacement. Again, this is kinda stable in terms of spending. And of course, the biggest part is this brown ribbon, which is basically our um new and replacement pipelines of. We're looking at more than forty-one main, forty-one miles over the five-year period. And this is water lines in, ranging in size from anywhere from uh eight inches up to forty-two, which is a big transmission beam. Uh, these are the different customer classes for the board that we have, single-family, multi-unit, agriculture, non-residential, non-potable recycle. Um, ninety percent of our customers are single-family and um they account for like almost thirty-six percent of the usage of water. But they only, they, they pay for ninety-five percent of their cost of service. So basically, what it costs us to provide water to them, they pay ninety-five percent of that. Whereas if you look at non-residential, which is like um big um businesses, hotels, those kinda um government agencies. Um, they account for five percent of our customers and account for about thirty-four percent of usage. However, they pay a hundred seventeen percent of this amount it costs to serve them. And the idea here being that we wanna try and um subsidize or um help encourage uh for the agricultural customers. And also for our non-potable recycled water customers. Um, agriculture, of course, is so that we can be um food sufficient, uh. Yeah, food sufficient, sorry. Okay, um, what, so again, this is the water rates that are being proposed, again, being proposed, not, not set yet, that will be approved by our board. So from January twenty twenty-four through June, oh, I'm sorry, it was June twenty twenty-nine, I'm sorry. I misspoke. I thought it was June thirty, twenty twenty-eight, but it's actually through June twenty twenty-nine. So as you can see, the first one will be ten percent, followed by ten percent, nine percent, eight and a half and eight and eight. Um, all customer classes will have the same water increase, but you're gonna see a little difference because. The single-family, multi- and agriculture all have uh tiers. So let me take you through that. Excuse me, um, so um the top one is the single-family residential. As you can see, there, the, there are three, uh, four tiers. Uh, the first one is uh up to two thousand gallons. The second one goes from two to six thousand gallons. The third goes from six thousand gallons to thirty thousand gallons and the fourth is anything above thirty thousand gallons. And you can see there what the, the rates will be. The idea here is we're trying to keep the essential uh rates, which is the, the usage between zero and two thousand gallons as low as possible. So that we can um keep the affordability. We make the um, the fourth tier higher to um. Encourage conservation, cause nobody wants to pay a really high rate. So they, we want them to uh look at conserving water as best they can. And again, like I said, for the essential needs tier, which is that lowest tier between zero and two thousand gallons. We're looking at limiting that to only two and a half percent raising uh increases per year. Um, and all residential residents will get this rate and ten percent of our residential customers. Use at least two thousand thou- two thousand gallons or less. So they're, they won't see a big increase. Okay, so uh our rates are um again designed as you see here. And again, as you can see, tier one, um, there's not a big difference from, from now to the end of um fiscal year twenty twenty-nine. Uh, it's only about a dollar and dollar twelve. Not much, not much, only from four forty-six to five seventeen. Um, the, 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 the top tier, as you can see there, there's a big difference. It goes from nine twenty-five to eighteen or two. And again, we were trying to promote conservation, encourage them to conserve so that they don't have to pay that, that large fee. And again, it is three percent of our single-family users who use that amount of water. And that's like three times more than the average single-family customer. So this is, this here shows you the information from the previous one and it shows you um how the rates will increase over the course of the five years, five and a half years, rather. Um, as you can see there, from four forty-six, it goes to five seventeen and then the rest are all there for you to see. Um, so how does that affect your bill? Well, let's, let's take an example here. So um in this example, um, the usage is eight thousand five hundred ten gallons. And what we do is we usually round it down to the nearest thousand gallons, where in this case it'll be eight thousand gallons or eight K gals. Now, what, how you, how the bill is calculated is, so for the first one, okay, so they use two thousand gallons, so that's times the um four point four six, which is current rate. Uh, then we go between two thousand one and six thousand gallons, that's four K gals. And we multiply by the, the, that tier rate and so forth and so forth. So the bill comes up to um fifty-three dollars and seventy-one cents. Now you see in there a monthly customer charge and that's for the meters. I'll get to that next. So we have a monthly customer charge which is based on water meter size. A majority of our residential customers have five eighths or three-quarter inch meters. Um, the bigger um multifamily stuff, they, they normally have a little hard, larger meters itself. But these costs are charged to everybody and it's used to cover the cost of meter reading and billing. Uh, maintaining and repairing our meters and also any cus- customer service um uh functions that we do. So if you compare the water bill, um, essential needs tier, um, which is ten percent of single-family residential. Um, this is what the rates will, what you end up paying. Right now, your current bill is twenty-one dollars and one cents. And um in July of twenty twenty-eight, it'll be up to thirty dollars and fifty-two cents. Now, you, you notice that if you look at the change percent on the bottom, it doesn't reflect that ten, ten, ten in nine and a half, eight, eight. Well, the, the reason why is, is because of the tier structure itself, the percentages come out a little uh different. But um, uh, overall, the rates will go up to that ten, ten, nine and a half, eight and eight. Okay, uh, oops. Lost my place. Okay, so comparing water bills, average water user, single-family residential. So our current bill is at fifty-nine dollars, little under sixty dollars. And by July first, this is average water use of nine thousand gallons per month, yeah? Um, in July first, it'll go up to ninety, almost ninety-eight dollars. Uh, this is a high-water user again, which is a top three percent of our single-family residential. And this is um looking at thirty-five thousand gallons per month. So you're looking at a current bill of about two hundred twenty, almost two hundred thirty dollars. And by July first, with the water rates we have a um set, uh, it'll be four hundred, almost four hundred fifteen dollars. Hey, this one shows you the multi-unit residential water rates. Again, it is a tier structure, yeah, a little bit, uh, it is the same, well, a little different from the um single-family. The first tier is zero to two thousand gallons, the second tier is two thousand one to four thousand gallons. The third tier is four thousand one to ten thousand gallons and the fourth tier is uh more than ten thousand gallons. So again, you can see the rates there as they, they vary across the five and a half year period. Um, so uh sample water bill, usually multi-res- unit residential, they, the, the each unit does not have. Its own meter and it has one large meter that's used to build everybody. So um these are the charges and it would be based on the number of units. The meter size is based on the number of units in any, any building. So as you can see here, for like two hundred seventy-two units, you would need a three-inch meter size. And we're looking at about seven thousand gallons per, per, per day, per unit, uh, per dwelling unit. And so you see there what the proposed rates will look like. So non-residential customers again pay um a little more for their cost of service. Um, a hundred, about seventy percent more for their cost of service. And they pay uh five thousand twenty-seven cents per a thousand gallons. And again, uh, we, we um use that to subsidize single-family residential agriculture and non-potable and recycled water customers. Okay, so non-residential water rates uh currently is five twenty-seven and over the five and a half year period, you're gonna see a uh increase to eight dollars and eighty cents. And this is all per thousand gallons, yeah? So some sample bills, um, a restaurant that has a one-inch meter, it has a monthly usage of two hundred thirty thousand gallons. Their current bill is about twelve, twelve hundred thirty dollars. They're gonna see that rise to approximately twenty-one hundred dollars at the end of the five and a half year period. Um, and you can see the rest, a large shopping center will go from twenty-six to about forty-three thousand dollars. Uh, our reduced rates will be continued. Of course, we're offering lower rates for our local agriculture, cause we wanna promote um uh food and self-sufficiency here in the islands. And also the use of recycled water. Recycled water is very important because it allows us to match use with quality. And allows us to preserve um the drinking water, which is uh of higher qualities for uh domestic consumption. And of course, we'll continue to ex- our existing fee waivers for, to support affordable housing. Uh, for homeless housing, which is getting more and more important. And also to, for buildings that need to retrofit their fire sprinklers. So those uh fee waivers will continue. And we're also considering waivers for new farmers, will be waiving the installation fee and water system facility charges. For um meters that are three-quarter inch and one inch in size that are connected to the Border Watch by system for the first time. Um, we're limiting, uh, we're getting a grant from the state of Hawaii of about a million dollars for exploratory well in Kunaia. That will be used to, to help this um uh initiative. Uh, of course, we will require proof of commercial agriculture operation and a water use plan. Uh, we recognize our, that as our rates go up, we also must do more to encourage conservation. Cause it's important to conserve what we have, since we have a limited supply. And so we offer a number of rebates for water conservation devices that you see there. Um, we outreach to hotels, other businesses, condominiums, townhomes. Um, we do direct installation for Kapuna living on their own. And all different types of things that we do for that. If you need, uh, if you like more information, you can go to the Board of Water Supply website at borderwaspby.com and click on the conservation menu tab. So this is a schedule that we've been going through. Um, we began our technical analysis about eighteen months ago. And uh we're now at the point where we wanted to seek input from the various um communities on the proposed uh rate structure. So we welcome your input through the end of September and we anticipate our board formally considering the proposed changes in the September, October timeframe. We have had uh several community meetings over the last few days, uh, Monday, when, Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday, we had meetings. We have one final meeting coming up next week, Wednesday, at the Millilani High School cafeteria. Excuse me. Finally, uh, we want your input on our water rates and you can see there how you can get in touch with us. Oh, excuse me. Uh, you can send a letter or an email or you can um. Call us, go to our website. Oh, hang on a minute. I'm so sorry. Okay, and um you can also click on this QR code. When you go to our website and you can um with your mobile device to get more information. And of course, we have Twitter and also Facebook. And that concludes the presentation. Uh, open to, we're open to any questions you may have.
Alright, I'm gonna open up the questions from uh members of the board first. I recognize Corinne first.
Thank you. Um, can you guys hear me? I was wondering, okay, so. When you um have these different tiers and the multifamily residential complexes that use more water or charge a higher rate. I was wondering if that includes any calculation based on the number of residents in the building or the number of households? Obviously, a tiny multifamily uh housing complex would use less water than a giant tower. So I'm just trying to understand if that's figured into the.
Sorry, sorry about that.
Because otherwise, it would appear that you're subsidizing um, you know, smaller complexes and overcharging. Large towers. So I'm just trying to see if that's what you're saying or if I misunderstood.
Okay, um, I think I'll uh uh fill this to one of our um other. Okay, um, I think I'll uh uh fill this to one of our um other organizations, maybe um Joe Cooper?
Yeah, no, um, and I don't know if you can bring up the slide or not, um, I don't know if you had a multifamily slide on there. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, we can.
So, um.
Okay.
So here, um, the multifamily is based on the number of dwelling units. Um, and so if you look at the top row, we have a dwelling unit with two hundred and seventy one, or a, a, an apartment complex, a condo, whatever, with two hundred and seventy two dwelling u- units. Um, and so each of those would be allotted and calculated the water, well, actually, this, this condo will only have one meter. And so we're going to calculate the water based on the combined use of all these, of all the tenants. But we're going to base it on assuming that there's two hundred and seventy two unit, the dwelling unit. So each one of those will be separated by a tier, and so um so that, so that each two hundred and seventy two times two thousand um gallons, the first, uh, so that's four hundred, five hundred and forty four thousand gallons. On the first four, four hundred and forty four thousand gallons will be charged at a lower rate. Um, and so as you can see, that has a, a, a seven, or go back um to the other slide. Um, that has, that, that's a, um, they're using, their monthly usage is about seven thousand K gal, that's per dwelling unit. So that would be calculated out. We're probably sending out the bill um to the customer, which is probably the um management company, and they're probably allocating it out to the um, to the tenants or the, the occupants of the, the building. Um, if you go down to the bottom slide, um, there's, there's, it's a very, or the bottom row, it's a very similar um number of units, two hundred and seventy seven, but they have a much larger meter, they have an eight inch meter, and they're using a lot, a, a, a lot more water per unit, fourteen thousand gallons of water per unit per. And so again, we're calculating that out, they all get calculated out, all two hundred and seventy seven units get the benefit of the two thou- the, the first tier, and then it moves to the second tier, et cetera. But um we're just generating one bill, and again, the um complex manager is allocating that to the tenants. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
All right, I recognize John at this time. Uh, John, please speak towards you.
Oh, got it, Mike, there, okay, got it, yes. Uh, I noticed you didn't say anything about the desalination. We got a whole lot of water out there, we're kind of ignoring it. But if we're gonna go up to uh a thousand dollars a month for our water, I could maybe do something about it. What plans do you have to make use of the Pacific Ocean in the future?
Right, and then, so this, we are doing our first desalination plant out in Kalailoa, and which would mainly serve uh Campbell Industrial Park. Uh, the first phase would be one point seven million gallons a day capacity with possible upsizing to five. Um, so we are, we are starting to look at it, but um, you know, costs are still high. And, you know, we, we don't wanna just start doing it without getting an idea of what it actually will, 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 will pan out to be. Um, Barry Sugawak can jump in on this?
Anyway, yeah, so we started the project. Thanks for the question, by the way, um, my name is Barry. I had the Water Resources Division and Holland Border Water Supply. Um, yeah, so in April, we awarded a, a contract to design and construct and operate of the facility that Mike was referring to in Camp, in Campbell industrial park. We're going to, um, it's a one point seven M G D, it's on land that was given a bid to us um for free by the federal government when the um naval air station closed, the Barber's Point Naval Air Station. Yep, the, the, the um, the two uh largest um impacts, I guess, is the power cost and, you know, what to do with the brine concentrates. So in the power costs, you know, we have an energy um recovery devices that are typically with seawater. Uh, desalination plants, they're reverse osmosis membranes, so they, they use a lot of power. But we have twenty acres, and so in a future phase, we are um um planning a photovoltaic farm to offset the energy cost. Um, and as far as the brine, the Campbell industrial park area is an injection control area, so we're gonna inject it into the ground. Our source wells are deep wells, and we're gonna inject the brine in the, in the, in the, in the upper cap rock, but offsite, not offshore, so we don't wanna affect the, the natural water. But yeah, we think we need it because um uh climate change and forecasted droughts, we need to diversify our water system, so uh thanks for um, you know, bringing up the, the desalination project.
Yeah. Okay, now, but five years from now, it's gonna get worse.
All right, I'll take a question now from Alena Forden.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Mutzul, for sharing your presentation. I wanted to ask if there is some clarity that you can share on the non-residential tiered um category, if that includes military bases as well as any of the forty golf courses on Oahu, knowing that three of them, or most of them, are using a recycled water. I'm wanting to understand that. And then second, I'm knowing that these high costs of the, the water is incentive for our non-residential and commercial entities to reduce their water usage, but wondering if there's also policy bans that you folks are looking into to reduce that uh water usage, for example, in twenty twenty two, just last year, California put a ban on using potable water for any decorative or non-essential greens in commercial or industrial buildings. So, those two questions, thank you so much.
Mike, you have me take that?
Uh, I think Barry, maybe you can try uh take a, take a shot at responding to you to the questions. I think you're probably the best qualified to do that.
I think we all are, but the, okay, so the non-residential doesn't have a tier, it's a flat rate. And it's flat because, can you go to the non-residential, Mike? It's a flat rate because there's such a large uh variation in types of non-residential. It could be an office building, it could be a warehouse, could be a golf course, could be a bottling company, you know, so, so it's a flat rate. Um, and it, it is increasing at the same, and all the rates are increased at the same percentage. Um, and so the larger, the, the larger um the larger properties, like shopping centers and golf courses, they're gonna, they use a lot of water. Um, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll see the, you know, the more water you use, the more you gotta pay, kinda deal. Um, so in terms of um, uh, we just started a commercial uh rebate incentives for um yeah, for a commercial, we have a residential rebate, and we just started the commercial. So we're trying to um have or, or, or pro- uh provide ways for businesses and residences to use less water through our water conservation measures, so um if, if they can be more efficient, then they'll reduce the amount of water use, and then they can control their bill, so that's the idea. Um, in terms of large um mandates or bans, um, most of the golf courses on Oahu um either are on our recycled water system, the ones in Eva, or they have their own well. Um, there are only three golf courses that are the largest ones that use, um, you know, a lot of potable water. In one of them, I'm working with them on a, a turf replacement um um pilot that they could reduce some of their uh area that they irrigate and save water. Uh, but in terms of bans for new um commercial or landscaping, um, we haven't considered that. Um, we have a rule that says that if you are, um, if you have a large landscape area such as a golf course or a park or roadway landscaping of a, a school um that, and, and non-potable is available, you have to use that water, and non-potable is of larger, could include brackage, or it could include recycled water. And those rates are subsidized um from the non-residential uh rate, so we can try to promote more diversification in our system, uh utilizing um, you know, matching water quality to use, yeah? Lower water quality for irrigation, save the high quality for drinking is the idea. Hope that answers your question.
How many military bases, uh Ms. Pardon also asked Barry or Ernie, use our water?
There's, there's only a, you know, Schofield and Pearl Harbor have their own sources. Tripler had, and Shafter have their own wells. So the only bases we serve is Canary Marine Base, which is the largest customer we have on the island that uses two million gallons a day. Uh, Fort Durusie is another one that we serve, and we serve some of the smaller ones like Bellows and uh some of the the wide direct area, uh those, those types of military installations.
Uh, I'm gonna recognize Hugh and then uh Nathan, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you for the presentation. Uh, just uh two questions. One is a clarification. Um, I think, Mr. Mutzul, you mentioned that for essential water use less than two thousand gallons per month, the price increases would be two, two, three percent, but I thought, I, I saw in a presentation, looked like six, six, seven percent. Um, and then I guess the other question is, um, I mean, I, I'm sure that there's multiple factors, but what, what is, what's driving these increases in price, uh the proposed in- increase in, in rates? Is it sort of catching up with the increase in energy costs or anticipated energy costs or anticipated infrastructure costs, or what, what's, what's the biggest factors behind the proposed rate increase?
So, Mike, Mike, uh, let me answer that question. Um, let's see, uh, you know, first to um explain the um the, the single family, I think if you go up to the, the sample bill, um, actually, we, we have two, um, uh, your charge, there, there are two things that you're being charged for. One is the usage rate, and one is the customer or, or monthly charge. And the monthly charge is going on, on, is based on the meter size, so the larger meter sizes pay a much higher um meter charge or monthly rate, and the smaller meters um pay a lower rate. Um, I believe that most residential areas have, thank you, Mike, um, this is the, the cost of the um, of the meters. Most residential houses have a five eighth to a three quarter inch meter. Currently, they're being charged twelve dollars and nine cents per month, and I'm just getting word first, that will go up to thirteen dollars and thirty cents, or as it, as we mentioned, in general, a ten percent increase. So all the monthly charges um are going up at the ten percent, ten percent, nine, eight and a half percent, et cetera, rate that we um, we quoted earlier. Um, then the usage charge for under two thousand gallons is going up at two and a half percent. But when you combine the monthly charge um increase with the um with the consumption charge, yes, you are getting a, a six point eight percent increase in the first, um, on the first rate increase. So, and that's what's causing that, it's the um increase in the monthly service charge. Um, what, was there another part to your question?
Uh, it wasn't another part, it was just a separate question. What, what, what's the main driver of, oh, it's the, the pro- the proposed?
Well, I, I mean, I, I'm going to say i- it's, it's the economy, um, it's, it's inflation in general, um, as we described before, uh, you know, our, our rates over the last five years have gone up about twelve percent. Um, and the um inflation rate in general has been about twenty percent. Yes, a lot of that is due to the rising energy costs, um, but there have also been a lot of other rising costs. I know in construction, I, um, you know, a, a, a lot of our bids are coming in even a hundred percent over what they were four or five years ago. So on the cost of construction, the supply chain backlog, et cetera, have driven all costs up. So it's not one specific cost or one specific driver that's driving this up, it's just a general inflation rate.
I'm just gonna jump in that one before, uh Nathan, I just want some clarity on the inflation point. Is this to uh catch up with previous inflation, or is this in anticipation of future inflation rates?
Um, it's, um, it's, it's a little bit of both. Uh, I, I think it's really more, um, is we're really not catching up with money that we spend in the past. We are catching up, or we're trying to catch up um with our capital improvements, um, that, that may have slowed down. Um, and so it's basically, basically what it's based on is we've projected out our expected costs um over the next five, five and a half years, that's called our revenue requirement. So we expect, projected out how much um our salaries and operations and maintenance are going to cost, and how much I'm completing our capital improvement program is going to cost. And then, um, then we've adjusted the rates to um, to try to, to um recapture those dollars that we expect to spend um in our rates.
Okay, I recognize uh Nathan, please go ahead with your question.
Okay, um, I guess recently reported to us, uh, the homeless are actually using um some residents' faucets and water uh for their own purposes. Uh, and I guess are drastically increasing, increasing water bills. Uh, is there any way that they can report this or some such, so as to reduce their, possibly reduce their um water costs?
Uh, I'll take that question, uh, thank you, this is Ernie. Um, right now, we don't have a mechanism for that. Basically, everything that flows through the meter, uh, we, we build a customer for, including leaks. Uh, we do have an adjustment for underground leaks, uh, if you have in your plumbing on property an underground leak and you, uh, your water use went up, we do have a process to get an adjustment for that uh for our customers, but not uh somebody that uh is walking up to your hose bib and turning it on.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I, I, I guess the follow-up to that is, uh, would, would it be possible to explore an option, since it seems to be a, a bit of a problem in our area? Thank you very much.
Thank you, you might also consider uh a different type of hose bib that's harder to tamper with, uh, but thank you.
Is, is that something which I see you do a lot of rebate programs, that might be considered for a rebate program in the future?
Uh, well, I appreciate that, Chair, Chair Ross, we'll take that under advisement, you know, we know. This is actually the first time that anybody suggested that, but that's pretty, pretty creative, but thank you.
Uh, that was, that was the best response I could have hoped for from you, so I appreciate that, okay?
Yeah, just to clarify, because it's, uh, they reported that the homeless are coming in, they're drinking, they're showering, they're using it as the bathroom, uh, and then they're leaving it on into the morning and when the owners discover it, so that's why I ask.
You know, actually, there's a, something that we're looking into is uh where you can monitor for leaks on your property and alert you on your smartphone. Uh, so, so we're looking at maybe a rebate for some of these devices that have been used in California uh that would alert you uh that there is water use, be a possible leak. And, and then you could uh try to address, you know, ethical use of your faucets.
Great, well, thank you very much. Uh, do we have any other, okay, Chuck. Uh, we have another question. Chuck, please go ahead and speak towards this mic.
Yes, um, uh, before I get into my question, I wanted to uh thank Ernie Lau for being such a great guardian and steward of our water supply. I don't think the general public can thank you enough, so thank you, our board. Um, my question is regarding, thank you. My question is regarding your replacement of, of pipelines. I know you said that a, a big portion of the money is going into your C I P projects. So, do you have a, a percentage or a benchmark as far as how much pipes are you gonna be replacing, because you know, we all know how many pipes break and, and, you know, it, it's because it's so old, I think some of them are approaching close to, I'm not sure, it's a hundred, a hundred years. So, is there any kind of benchmark that you're gonna be shooting for in addressing the pipes placements?
Yeah, thank you for that question. This is Ernie again. Um, I, I would say, I would caveat this to say, prior to the Red Hill crisis uh there created by our military, uh, our target was to actually uh ramp up to replacing at least up to a twenty one miles a year, that's only, out of twenty one hundred miles, that's a one percent of our pipelines each year. And that would eventually, uh, the oldest pipe in the system might be a hundred years. Of course, you know, that was the first uh target, but because of Red Hill,
But because of Red Hill and the the potential impacts to the aquifer that both the Navy and the Board of Water Supply pump from, we're now into this mode of installing monitor wells to try to locate the contaminant plumes, but also developing alternative water sources in the event that we can never turn on halava shaft again or halava wells or IA wells. So how do we make up that lost capacity? So we're pumping our other wells harder and we don't want to do that for the long term. So that's kind of thrown our plan off. But eventually we want to get back to replacing at least the minimum 1% of our total pipelines each year. And maybe move toward a higher percentage in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Lau.
Thank you so much. And I just do want to say that on the Red Hill issue, you also have at the meeting here, Mr. Erwin Kavatam, my deputy manager. Er and I have been working on this nearly 10 years. And there are other people at the Board of Water Supply that have also so worked toward this effort. It's it's not just an Ernie Lau effort. I appreciate the recognition, but it is a I'd like to recognize the whole Board of Water Supply team here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I want to echo Chuck's comments about his appreciation. Corinne, did you have something you wanted to add? Go ahead.
And if this was covered in the presentation, I'm sorry that I didn't understand all the slides. Is the new change that you're proposing going to continue to prefer single family dwellers over residential dwellers? I mean, over multifamily residential dwellers?
I I'm not sure if I understand the question, but let me take a stab.
Let me try to say it a better way. Okay. And one of the slides suggested that that single family homeowners pay 95% of their costs and they're therefore subsidized. And I believe the presenter suggested that it was part of the policy to subsidize single family homeowners. So or residential users. Whereas multifamily residential residents pay 100%, so they are not subsidized. And I'm just wondering if that policy will continue or if you're planning to eliminate that.
For for now, so what happened is back in 2018, when we adopted a series, a series of five year rates, a rate schedule for five years. We looked at the cost of service recovery for each of these customer classes. And actually, at that time, I think multi unit residential customers are paying over 100%. So they're actually helping to subsidize others. And I think residential, single family residential customers, which are the majority of our customers, I think over 150,000 of our customers are single family residential customers. They're paying less than 95%. So the the goal over the last five, the past five years was to move single family residential customers to 95% of cost of service recovery. Make you multi unit residential customers at cost of service. That's 100%. And try to reduce non residential customers route providing even more subsidies to others. So trying to reduce that down. Eventually, maybe we might take it to where everybody is paying cost of service. But for now, we we realize that especially our single family customers, some of the some of them are really struggling. All our, all our customers are struggling. But for now, we decided just to keep this breakdown of cost of service recovery the same for this this next five years and then revisit it again after that. I hope I answered your questions.
You did. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I think we might be through our board questions, but I do notice that Kathleen has her hand up. Did you want to add something?
Yeah, I did. I I thank you, Chair. Mike, could you go to the last slide of contact? Thomas had asked us to paste the contact email into the chat. And I'll go ahead and do that. Thank you, Thomas. I appreciate that.
Great. That seems like a good slide slide to end on. Thank you all so much for this presentation, this useful information for the board. I guess we look forward to seeing some of you next month. Oh, there's one more question. I didn't see that. Oh, I'm sorry, Tom. I must cut you off there. Tom, please go ahead before we wrap up.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mike and and Ernie and Joe for all the information. It helps to see this repeatedly. I did have extended conversation with you the other evening at Japanese Cultural Center. My one question for this evening is you did have one slide early on showing that how inflation has decreased our purchasing power and showing that over the last five years, total inflation was almost 21%. And the total border water supply revenue increase was only 12 and a half percent. That's, of course, easier looking backwards because we have the the information available, et cetera. We could quibble in different ways, every person as to, you know, how come the rate is this versus that or whatever in the projection. But my only question really is, how did you factor or were you able to? Yeah, that's a slide. Thank you. Kind of a an estimated inflation rate during the next five year period. I mean, to me, that's completely unknowable. But in estimating things, you've got to take something into consideration just for, you know, your overall budget planning. And you still are going to have unanticipated impacts or needs like Red Hill develop. But as as to an inflation factor, you know, did you kind of estimate a 3% per year or, you know, whatever?
Yeah, thank you, Tom. Very good point because in developing these water rates, we start off with a projection of our revenues, our our cost over the next five years. And for our operating budget and we kind of project also what our CIP might look like. Also trying to adjust those costs for the inflation. So we did assume certain inflation factors going over this five and a half year period. Joe, do you remember what those percentages were? I think they were a little higher in the beginning and then started to hopefully get back more to normal in the future.
Yeah, yeah. Well, first, I think as I think most people know, we're a union shop and we have a collective bargaining agreement that has certain pay raises or increases projected out. And so actually, we're we built a budget or projections from the ground up and so for for an inflation rate for for our salaries, which is a large part of our expenses. We would use the collective, what what is projected in the collective bargaining. And then on you know, yeah, I believe on on the other inflation rates, I believe we did start with 4% perhaps in the next year and then gradually going down to 3% by the end of the period. So it is a declining rate and you're right, it's really anybody's guess. And when people ask me in the morning, I would tell them one number. And when they ask me in the afternoon, I would give them a different number. But it seems to be changing that rapidly. But it was we think that that was a reasonable operate to to us.
Okay, appreciate that. And and from other things, certainly using the collective bargaining agreement is is a good measure because of all the work that has to go into that as well. So appreciate that information.
You're welcome.
All right. Well, I I started the the heartfelt thank you to all of you for your presentation. I want to impose upon everyone a second time, but I thank you again so much and we'll look forward to seeing some of you next month.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, everyone. I don't do this too often, but I did want to include a chair's report. We have many new board members. We're back to meeting in person. It seems like an appropriate thing to put in. So aloha to all of our board members, our attendees this evening. First and foremost, as we gather tonight, I believe we're all still just trying to process the horrifying news on Maui. There isn't anything that I'm going to be able to say right now that hasn't already been said by others and said better. Our primary focus on tonight's meeting, as you can all tell, was the Board of Water Supply report on their rates. Water is always an important topic and of course Maui was a part of the reminder that water is life. With the sort of concerns about being in person again, I do want to highlight that we do really want to be adjourning the meeting around 8:15 because we do definitely have to be fully out of here by 8:30. And that's just allowing us adequate time. So I hope we can all operate with the collective goal of this meeting and every meeting of being concise yet thoughtful of our comments. And to that end, I encourage questions and comments from the board to be focused on issues of community concern. I think we've been doing a great job at that. But if it's something which could be emailed, please do so. But if you want the credit to show that you're actively participating, you can say, I'm going to email you something later because that doesn't really take much time from the meeting. I know that sometimes a concern. On the matter of planned, the planned community tour with council members say, I want to say a heartfelt mahalo to the five people who responded as of 4:30 today. It's a really great tour. It's going to help us all better understand the locations. And if any of you haven't done it, but want to do it real quick, open up on your phones or your laptops. That will help inform us. And if we can pick a date or a few dates now, we can start publicizing it and getting government leaders who are trying to get to do things in some of these locations invited nice and early. The ongoing challenge of the five way intersection at Lower Punch Bowl is still a ongoing issue, of course. It's a dangerous location. It's already taken a life once this year. Council member Santos Tam has presented a proposed solution. But it looks like there's not going to be a second community meeting such as the one at Stevenson Prior. So in order to have a forum on this topic where we can let the community speak on it and hear about the idea more thoroughly, I think it's imperative that we provide that venue at our next meeting. So kind of like how I cleared a lot of the agenda today for our presentation, I want to do that for the next meeting. I know there's a lot of pressing issues, but I think this is one that's very actionable right now. And for that reason, I'm going to be pushing a lot aside. So if you have agenda item requests, let me know if they can wait for a little bit later in the year. And or maybe just come into it knowing we might not end up having time for it, even if it is on the agenda. I'm going to be asking the council member, any staff, share any articles or relevant writing so people can get up to speed. But this is really the goal here. We have a proposed solution. And I'd love to see the board weigh in on whether we think this solution is the right way or not the right way to go. You know, there's not going to be a lot of other community groups or moments people to weigh in. We can't really lean on someone else to do it. So we should do a proposal. But we're not the act of law. So, you know, you don't have to be perfectly concerned about dotting every eye and crossing every T. But we want to give that useful feedback to government. On another topic of important issues, we, of course, all are experiencing the rising rates of homelessness in our vicinity. And this is a huge problem. I've had the opportunity and the challenge of listening to many stories and each one underscores the urgency. Really briefly, June, a resident in our community reached out just a couple of days ago about an unsettling event where she and her daughter coming back from Safeway were followed by three men who were begging for money and started grabbing at their grocery bags. They ended up fleeing and pretending to be a resident at another place and calling 911 to get a company being able to go home. We've also heard and I believe a few members of the Board of NCC on this, the inhabitants of Luna Lilo, Luna Lilo Gardens continue to grapple with some really bad disturbances. The property of 1158 has been a magnet for criminal activity while it's being worked on. They're going to tear it down and build a new facility. But there are permit delays and during these permit delays, no one's there. And a lot of activities have spilled out and begun harassing residents in the areas. One concern we've all heard before is police won't respond to calls related to break ins in most cases. If it's not the owner of the property calling, the owner is not that property right now. It's being demolished. So that means nearby residents aren't being heard, or at least they're not feeling as if they're being heard. So really briefly, I think this is something we can be weighing in on. We're really lucky to have Councilmember Calvin Say. Last time I checked, was the Chair of the Permitting Committee. I think this right now as part of my report is an encouragement to maybe see if we can move that permit quicker. And I have heard that since the city has taken to cutting some bushes back, things have improved a little bit. So we know that some work there gets good results. On another night, on a very different issue, I should say, I've also been getting more concerns related to dog issues. One, the need for a dog park. And two, dog owners maybe not doing their full responsibility to clean up, clean up after themselves. I think I'm seeing a lot of nods around the room. We have a $1,000 marketing budget. I, you know, might want to lean as chair towards us considering putting up some please clean up after your dog signs at locations where they're allowed. It can say courtesy of the neighborhood board on it. And finally, anyone who's passionate about being more involved for our neighborhood board and our community can always do so by joining one of our committees. We currently have two. If you go to our Google Drive, which is linked to inner minutes, you can click to join as a committee. There was a small typo where I called the committee the Reform Committee. It's the reorganizing committee and it's now end zoning. Now, okay, then it's going to be renamed again to be the appropriate name. Now, anyone not doing it to be a resident can join these groups, but only board members can be chairs. Anyway, mahalo for your unwavering commitment. I promise not to do these chair reports very often, but we've had a number of things in the pipeline. So I wanted to bring this up. Any questions on the chair's report? Please go ahead, Chuck.
Chair Ross.
Yes. Yes.
Are these areas pretty much actually stoned or we have still be added?
I think if they're on the route, they potentially can be added. We're also looking at a second one. We're really lucky that the staff of Calvin Say actually has some experience in mapping. So this is a very efficient. I tried to map one out and it looked terrible. But if it's on the route, I don't see why not. It's going to be a walk. Yes. Yes. Yeah, it's going to be. It's going to be great exercise. Get my Fitbit ready for it. All right, Tom Heinrich, I recognize you at this time. Oh, let's say he doesn't need his hand up. Okay, great. Well, we it looks like we that's all the questions. Again, I probably don't do too many of these, but I think some things are really pressing. So at that, we're going to move on to resident and community concerns. We offer two minutes for anything that's not currently on the agenda. It won't be actionable, but can be brought up at this time. I recognize Claire at this time. Please go ahead, Claire.
I apologize, Chair. I was in the elevator, running around, getting ready to deploy to Maui. Did I miss my opportunity to speak about the intersection of Alapai Prospect and Eulani?
So that is under unfinished board business and I do hope that we're able to get to that this evening.
Oh, we didn't get to that yet.
Not yet, not yet.
Oh, okay. I apologize. I'm just kind of running around tonight. I will wait my turn. Thank you, everyone. So sorry.
Thank you, Claire. I'm not seeing either hands up. If you're a community member, you're not sure how to use the raise hand function, but you came here to say something. Now is your time to unmute. Okay, we'll move on in the agenda then. We're now to state elected official reports, starting with Governor Josh Green's representative. Sorry. I'm so sorry. Okay, I had something over my piece of paper. I apologize for getting out of order. We're going to go back to the City and County of Honolulu elected official monthly reports, starting with City Councilmember Calvin Se.
Hi. I'm here, Ian, board members. I'll be very brief. My report is in the chat. You've gotten my report. But other than that, I'm just pleased that the City and County of Honolulu is represented by the Police Department, the Fire Department, Board of Water Supply, and I enjoyed this evening's conversation. The only question that I had, Ian, and to the board members was for butter water. And I'm probably going to ask the question. And that is in regards to, do we have the backup generators to address the 33% of electricity that we use in pumping our waters? And that's about it.
Great question. See, is there anyone left to be able to answer that one?
Hi, this is Michelle. I'll note that if you want to post an answer next month, if that's okay.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay, definitely. Thank you for your great question. Aloha.
All right, shall we move to questions, Councilmember?
Yes, go right ahead.
All right, do we have any questions from board members at this time? Seeing none, any question? Oh, sorry, I missed your name. Go ahead.
I mean, I guess we have the kind of outstanding question, what can we do about 1158 Luna Lilo Street?
Yes, that's going to be my question as well. So I had mentioned the permitting. Yes, uh, so going to be my question as well. So I had mentioned the permitting issue for the trying to demolish and build a new structure. Is there anything within your purview, anything you can share about how this permit might be able to be expedited for community concern reasons?
It has never come before the council, and I'll probably ask Janelle or Melvia or Brandon to have any, uh, reports on that particular project.
That's very helpful.
And one more.
One more question from Nathan.
Yeah.
Yeah, go right ahead, Nate.
Yep, uh, along Hailu Street, I guess twelve fifty-one Hailu, which happens to be my building. Uh, there's, uh, so like going up Malka, it's on the left-hand side of, uh, Kewalo Street. There's, um, a series of three trees. And then, uh, my building manager has complained to me that the trees, the amount of leaves they put out, uh, blocks our, um, I don't know, I guess piping. Uh, and not only that, but the roots will actually dig under and, and start destroying stuff on our property. Uh, and then I guess the city had at one point taken down one of the trees, uh, but then replaced it with the exact same tree, which does not exactly help us. Uh, and then, uh, so is there any way you can, I guess, connect with the building manager and perhaps, uh, figure something out?
Okay. Maybe I'll defer that particular project or issue to, uh, Melvia. Are you here? Hailu Street. Melvia, okay.
Yeah, I'm here. I got that.
Because that particular issue did pass through my desk in regards to Hailu, H-E-U-L-U, and, uh, I think maybe it might, might have been Brandon that was addressing that issue. But we'll go and check on it, Nate, for you next month.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and then the other one for Janelle, I really want to follow up what, uh, Chair Ross talked about in regards to the, is it, what property is that, that the demolition permitting?
I think, I think you have it on hand for eleven fifty-eight Luna Lilo, I believe.
Okay.
Eleven fifty-eight Luna Lilo.
Okay, we'll go and check on that, and we'll work with the, uh, who's that? Our good mayor's representative also.
Excellent. Thank you so much. All right, uh, well, I don't see any other questions at this time, so thank you so much. Will you stay on for a little bit longer so we can talk more about the community tour?
Yes, I'll be here.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to move on now to Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos Tam.
Hi, everybody. It's Robyn Henske. Just two items today to report on. Um, one being the recently organized, um, Makiki Neighborhood Watch. Um, it was kind of spearheaded by, uh, our Chief of Staff Brandon Mitsuda and, um, Board Member Harris Nakamoto. And I believe on the first meeting, the first walk, um, four items occurred. HPD ticketed and towed five vehicles that were illegally parked on Kinau Street. HPD helped to create a cell phone text list and email list so that, um, the members of the Neighborhood Security Watch can communicate better. HPD gave tips to homes and condos, um, owners to protect their homes from trespassers. And HPD welcomed direct communication to help community issues as they arrive. Um, this will be, um, Makiki Neighborhood Security Watch will coordinate with, um, HPD's community policing team from District One. Uh, Harris is gracious enough to be the, uh, block captain and will collect any information from neighbors in the Makiki area. Um, so yeah, and then I also have our monthly, um, newsletter in the, in the chat, and I'll stick around for any questions.
Well, it's very good news. Thank you so much, and, uh, thank you, Harris. Uh, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, thank you, Robyn, and, uh, I wanted to thank, uh, also, also member Santos Tam. Uh, we had, uh, when I sent, uh, requests and, uh, wanted to thank HPD because, uh, uh, Terrence Katakura, uh, met us with Brandon Mitsuda. And, uh, when I informed, uh, a few of the key homeowners, as well as a couple condo owners, uh, the condominiums, we had about twelve, twelve people show up and, uh, representatives from resident managers of the Victoria Street condo, um, Kinau Villas, where resident manager, president, so forth, okay? Uh, as well as some of the residents in Sinoni. Um, I've also sent, uh, email to, uh, invite, uh, Honolulu Museum of Art. So because, uh, on that side of Kinau Street, um, you know, along the, the street, there's, uh, trees growing along the sidewalk. And I'm not sure if they belong to the city, but they've kind of become overgrown and they're starting to, they split on the electrical wiring, which they're clear, but if possible, if they were able to cut, cut it down, then at night, a lot of the people who are walking their dogs, there'll be a much brighter and safer pathway for them. But right now it's, it's very dark. And so, and, and with the help of, uh, Councilmember Santos Tam, we're actually brightening the lights. But with the trees, it, it kind of evades the purpose too. So I'm not sure who we can ask to, uh, check in on those trees, but that would be very helpful if, if it's on the sidewalk, between the sidewalk and the street. And they're overgrown, so maybe if they can be.
Unfortunately, we don't have a mayor's representative with us tonight, but that's usually who we talk to about those things. But unfortunately not here this evening, so it was fine that you brought it up now. Okay. Uh, Robyn, did you want to jump in on that?
Yes, sorry, yeah, um, we're going to reach out to Mayor's Office. I can do that next week, definitely.
I think it was very, uh, we got a lot of support, there's a lot of interest. So I think within the, that area, we're going to start to expand, uh, citizen patrol.
Okay.
So we'll be able to share more.
You can email, uh, the board members of the web, uh, emails online, but please BCC them because there's a quorum issue on certain issues of conversation. But you can send out, you can send emails out to invite other board members if you like. All right, is there anything else on that point? Uh, Thomas, I recognize you at this time.
Thank you, Chair. Can you, uh, can everyone see me?
Yes.
So I did want to piggyback on the last discussion point. While I do agree with the need to ensure public safety and agree with the need for, um, you know, to ensure greater lighting, I also don't want that to detract from the need to ensure that we have cool streets during the day, especially as we see year by year temperatures getting hotter. We want to keep our streets cooler. So if there's any way that we can find a compromise between cutting down the trees or cutting, trimming them to ensure that we have, um, adequate lighting, but also making sure that they don't, they aren't trimmed so much that we have no, uh, shade. Uh, that's all, Chair.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think on that we'll, uh, move on in the agenda. Thank you so much for your report, Robyn. All right, so we're going to move on to the mayor's representative. Unfortunately, uh, we do have a new mayor's representative. That's not the unfortunate part. The unfortunate part is they were not able to join us this evening, but they did submit a report, uh, into the Google Drive, right, Logan? Yeah. Okay. I think for the sake of time before I can move on, but I'll let you just come up so they can see it.
And, uh, I can actually, if anyone has any concerns for the mayor's office, I can take them down and send them to the board.
Okay, uh, in this case, just for the sake of time, please email Logan with any of the concerns. I'm sure some of you have them. Please do. Look this up for responses. That way we're not chasing your own tail next month, trying to get a response to questions that are already there. This can be found in the drive. With that, I'm going to move on to state elected official reports, Governor Josh Green's representative. I don't believe Jai Countingham is with us this evening. So move along to Senator Carol Fukunaga, who did submit a report to us and included a survey on the back. Is anyone from her staff with us this evening? Seeing none, we're going to move on to Representative Della Alblotti. It's good to see you, Representative.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. It's so wonderful to be able to see folks online, and let's see that we're back in person as well. Uh, I guess for my report, I wish I could have more specifics to the district, but as you can imagine, over the last week, um, many in the state have been just mobilized around Maui. So some of my chief concerns as the Health Chair has been to really just follow up. And I think one of the things that we're seeing, um, on Maui is that the, uh, mobile health services, um, the medical community, our first responder community has really stepped up and, and, um, is doing the work that's needed in this terrible tragic situation. Um, with all that said, I think what's going to happen is we're going to see, um, the recovery, as many people are saying, is going to be a marathon. And so there will be a lot of obviously, um, focus at the legislature in seeing what are going to be the resources, um, that are going to need to be deployed and how we can effectively make sure that all of the various needs of our Maui family and friends are going to be addressed. Uh, our state government employees are working around the clock to, um, be able to get information and assist, um, our families and friends in Maui. So it's, it's just an incredible time, incredibly tragic time for our state. But I think, um, one bright hope, and I guess I'll say this is a positive thing, is that we have seen, uh, the tremendous aloha throughout the state. Um, I think as a shout out to our community, uh, our Papo Kulea residents over the last weekend, uh, partnered with a health clinic that really focuses on native Hawaiian kopuna on Maui, and they were able to collect a, an incredible amount of very specific items that are needed, are needed, for that health clinic. And so, uh, we see that happening. I encourage everyone here, uh, to the degree that you can. Um, if, you know, be judicious in what, um, you might want to physically donate, uh, and there's lots of information out there about the, the actual needs. Uh, and also, um, to encourage folks that really one of the things that, um, our Maui, um, family and friends are really going to need is going to be, um, monetary donations, and there are a number of very well-vetted, um, uh, well-vetted nonprofits, in particular Hawaii Community Foundation's Maui Strong Fund is, is something that is, is getting money actually out on the ground immediately, but is also collecting funds for the long-term recovery that we know is going to happen. So I would encourage you to do those things. With all of that said, um, I have still been very focused on district issues, and I really appreciate the leadership that this board is taking on homelessness issues. Um, prior to the disaster hitting, I was actually really kind of drilling down, uh, on some of the resources that our new administration has, um, with respect to homelessness. I've also been meeting with, uh, the new homelessness coordinator for the state. Uh, there has been some, uh, different approaches being used now that we have two new administrations. And so my hope is, um, if I can schedule it, um, again, my plan was to do something in August, uh, or September, but those plans may be, uh, delayed, but I'm hoping to have, um, some, um, I was hoping to have some informational briefings at the legislature to focus on what are some of the progress, uh, that's occurring with the homelessness, uh, initiatives on the different islands. Of course, now on Maui, we have a, a much more extreme type of houselessness that's going on, and so that will, uh, I, I will have to, um, schedule that appropriately. Um, but please know that, uh, I am looking at, uh, some of the issues specific to the City and County of Honolulu, and it really is tackling homelessness, uh, in our community is really, uh, a, a project, uh, and a task that needs to be done between the city and the state, as well as, uh, many, many nonprofit groups and, and, um, as demonstrated by this, uh, by this neighborhood, but, or neighborhood board by the community to get involved. So, um, those are some of the things that I've been working on, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Uh, thank you very much for your report. Um, we're going to take questions from board members first. Any board members with a question for the representative? Uh, seeing none, uh, thank you very much for your thorough report. Uh, I did actually have one question for you. There was that great all hands on deck, and it was really heartwarming to see the images of about a thousand people coming out to volunteer at the Capitol. Do you see anything else like that on the nearby horizon for need for organizers and people to provide labor to help with sorting goods?
I don't think at the state Capitol, I think actually, um, through much of actually the volunteer work of, of Capitol staff, um, much of that has already been processed and will be, um, deployed. There still is quite a bit of, of, of items, and maybe Representative Garrett could speak to that as well at the Capitol. But I think, um, you know, we're finding the systematic ways in which to get them out. And so, uh, I can report that I believe it was, my days are getting, um, mixed up, but I think it was yesterday that the Hawaii Food Bank did do another run, and they took a huge truckload. Uh, in particular, they were focused on food and, um, baby formula. So, uh, so there's no, I don't think that there's going to be anything at the Capitol, but certainly, uh, if there is something, I will make sure to put it on social media blast for all of you.
Thank you very much for that. Well, seeing no other questions, we'll look forward to seeing you next month. Uh, we're going to move on now to Representative Andrew Garrett. Thank you for joining us.
Well, my pleasure. Aloha, Chair. Good evening, uh, board members. Um, just, um, wanted to thank Representative Alblotti for that very articulate, um, recap of what's, you know, the tragedy that's happening in Lahaina. Um, you know, we have received some questions in terms of the legislature's response, if there might be a special session. Um, at this point, it doesn't seem like there is. We haven't heard anyone really articulate what the legislature might be able to do at this point. You know, we're obviously still in the search and recovery phase. We'll see what kind of resources FEMA can bring to bear. Um, as you folks may have heard, President Biden is actually going to visit the site, uh, next week, Monday. Um, but I think, you know, going forward, this is obviously going to be a big, uh, focus of the twenty-four legislature to figure out how we can rebuild Lahaina appropriately. Um, you know, one of the things that happened after Hurricane Iniki back in ninety, nineteen ninety-two was that some insurance companies basically bailed and left, uh, residents hanging. So we'll keep a close eye on that and make sure that, to the extent we can, that all the insurers, um, um, pay out the, uh, the claims that are held by the residents that were impacted by this. Um, another thing we'll have to keep an eye on too is the impact to the utility. Um, you know, some of you may know that the stock is basically cratered over the last week over concerns about, um, impacts of the utility. So, um, there may be a chance that utility rates may rise to help offset some of that liability. But again, that's just, um, speculation at the, at this point. It's still early to say how all this is going to play out, but, um, uh, just kind of keep it there in the interest of time and see if there might be any questions from the community. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Uh, any questions from board members at this time? Brandon, you're recognized. Please go ahead.
Is there any thought to any legislation that might regulate utilities so that they're forced to implement, uh, more proactive fire safety measures? Then, I mean, it seems crazy to me that they weren't required already to have a system in place to shut down general oil fire.
Right, yeah. Um, I don't want to speak on behalf of the utility, but I did hear some, uh, incident coverage that they were claiming that the electricity was needed to, um, power the water pumps that were needed to fight the fires. But as you know, there's an investigation going on. Um, initially, the governor asked the Attorney General to conduct it, but just within the last day, they announced they're actually going to outsource it to a third party with, of experts in this field. So at this point, I think it's just best if everyone just wants to see what the results of those findings are, and then we can, as a legislature, can, if legislation is, um, needed, make sure this doesn't happen again.
All right. I don't see any other questions from board members at this time, so thank you very much for your report.
Okay, thank you very much. See you next month.
We're going to move on to unfinished business. We did have a request to add an agenda item at this stage. Uh, has anything changed with the head count, Logan?
Um, not, I don't believe so. I think there are ten members.
So what are the rules related to adding an agenda item that's not front of this? I'll read it out on the front of this. Uh, a two-thirds vote of twelve members of the seventeen-member board is needed to add an item to the agenda. Items may not be added if they're of major importance and will affect a significant number of people. Um, so unfortunately, we did have a pending resolution that we're not able to, uh, add to the agenda because we have less than twelve people. Is that correct? Okay, that's very unfortunate.
Including those online. Including that we have, uh, you seven in person, and then we currently have three online.
Okay.
There are twelve.
Thank you. Um, well, I guess with that, we'll continue to unfinished business, concerns related to the safety of the intersection of Prospect Street and Alapi Street. I already, in my Chair's report, provided some information about how I want to make sure that this board is a venue for this. Uh, please help get the word out, especially people on Lower Punch Bowl that you might happen to know. Uh, with that, I want to see, uh, see if Claire Santos had anything to add.
Well, thank you, Chair. You know personally of my great discipline.
You know personally of my great disappointment that I came to this neighborhood board in January for help with this after the fatality of the 59-year-old man. On, you know, optics wise, when the teenager was killed on Kapialani, action was taken immediately and we have those most annoying speed bumps now on Kapialani. But now we're six months out from a 59-year-old man being killed and we have nothing. And the big resolution from all these expensive engineers is to put, make it a five-way stop street, which, as you know, that's a huge corridor for rush hour traffic and having five-way stops in a main thoroughfare like that is just absurd. So, you know, I, I, I think you said earlier, we're not going to have another meeting at Stevenson. I think Tyler Dos Santos, Tom, has done all he's going to do here. You know, the optics are not good and I'm disappointed at this point. And I'm wondering just what happens next because we're six months out and we've got nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. I hear you're. We do not have a transportation committee. Would you like to speak on that, John?
We ought to have a transportation committee. This is the kind of thing in every word, do a good job. If you drive up in Manoa Valley, you'll find suddenly there's a little lane goes off by itself. Because that's the neighbors driving through are doing. And so if our short shop that's five-way, you might be able to have a stop sign and, you know, proceed. There are ways that you can work around without having major traffic thing. So driving there, we have a community saying, no, if we did this, it could work. The five-way, yeah, you put a stop sign and then a slow sign, you know, you could do that. But if there's a way to make it happen, drivers can figure it out and we can then go ahead and redo the striping to make it work. So we can do our own engineering on that. And once we get a good idea, then you can tell the city, put real engineering in there. But I think if we had a committee to work on that, that'd be good.
Okay, later on, we can consider that. And that was in order to bring up. I want to bring up my, my evaluation right now. So I appreciate Claire for staying on top of this, keeping everyone honest, keeping on top of everyone. John for thinking of creative ways the board can continue to address this. I will say, you know, the proposal came up in June. So the real foot dragging so far has been trying to find the right venue for the community. And I did hear from the council member when they posted up about this concern, there was no feedback from the community. So my big concern right now is somewhat of the optics. I don't think it's just in the leadership part. I think a lot of the community isn't as engaged on this. And that is also, like you were mentioning, for transportation, some more of the board can shine. We are able to get people out to meetings to talk about specific issues when we try to do it. So one thing I'm going to do and can't be put on the agenda. So I don't think we can vote on it right now, but we can consider reimbursing me is I'm going to design some flyers and some walk pieces and put them up in the community. I will pass the receipt on to the board and the board may decide what he wants to do with that to promote next month's meeting. Because from my perspective as Chair, I've been ready to call a vote on whether to support the five-way stop for a little while now. And what I've wanted to hear is more members of the community weigh in. And, you know, we're blessed to have Claire speak her mind and come out to these things. And if we had nine more Claires, I actually do think we could resolve this quicker. And let's go find those nine more Claires who tell us what they think of the five-way stop. Because the decision between us right now is we have immediate funding. There's funding available. It's ready to go. It's pretty much held up on like waiting for the Publix feedback and the board's feedback to put the stop signs in. The alternative is to do another study and there's been so many studies to find other solutions. And there are other really compelling solutions. One example that came up at Stevenson was put a bean out thing. It's a weirdly shaped sort of thing in the middle of intersection that requires everyone to kind of drive around. And that means when there's head-on potential collisions, I mean, you don't get head-on collisions in those cases. People are in different angles and that can be majorly life-saving, slow people down the right way, et cetera, et cetera. And there's other ideas too. So the question is, do we want to go forward with something where there is funding and there is support from DTS? Or do we want to support something like a study and wait some undetermined amount of time for that to be done? And then wait some undetermined amount of time for funding to come through? And that's sort of what I'm seeing is the options. I think the board really should be weighing in one way or the other. And that's what we'll be spending next meeting doing. I'll recognize Robin and then we can go back to Claire. Robin, please go ahead.
Hi, everybody. It's me again. So yes, I think Chair, Chair Ross said it very well just a moment ago. Our office is still engaging with DTS. We implored the department to make a decision regarding an investigation that took place. They did all the studies confirm that the, the most cost-effective option, the most immediate option is the five-way stop. And I think with board input, community members input, the department can put that into consideration. And yeah, I appreciate Claire and her, her, her pushing this, this issue and keeping everyone accountable. I do, do appreciate this. And as it regards to like leafing the neighborhood, our office is completely on board with joining Chair Ross and other Makiki board members to canvas the, the community. So that's all from me. Thank you.
To his credit, the famous door knocker, Councilmember Santos Tam, did personally volunteer to come help knock some doors himself. Okay, we'll, we'll recognize Claire at this time.
Well, thank you again, Chair, and thank you all for being so politely in calling me a pain in the butt. It's just fine. But I want you to keep in mind, this is not a casual residential street in Manoa. This is a major thoroughfare where people are accessing the freeway, the Poly Ward Avenue. It is a huge backlog of traffic every morning and every evening. Making that a five-way stop is just absurd. Yes, I've been talking to all of my neighbors. They're all kind of disgusted, well, with the condo board as well. So they're kind of generally demoralized right now. They did come to the last Stevenson meeting, but the meeting was changed to a room they didn't know about and they thought nobody showed up for the meeting. That was really unfortunate that it wasn't in the usual place. So to get them back on board, it's going to take more than just me. Hopefully we can get something together, but don't, don't rely on just that alone. I mean, know in your own brains what the better solution is. You know, don't, don't dump it back to us because we all know that something, that being about is actually what people want. They want that sort of roundabout thing. So we could slow the traffic and not play stop and go games, which is energy inefficient, by the way, and gas-powered vehicles. So that's my words on it for tonight. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Claire. Okay, I think we're ready to move on in this item. We'll have plenty of time to talk about it at the next meeting. I'm going to move on to Neighborhood Tour with Councilmember Calvin Seck. So I'll come back around to this issue.
You're a muted council member. You're, you're still muted, Councilmember Seck.
No, I think Ian, you can talk to Brandon about it and setting up what sites they would like to go and tour. And I hope we could do it maybe in two, two tours because of how big the district is. There you go. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I'll leave it to the board as far as how they would like to conduct the tour, but I'll be happy to be a part as far as accompanying them, see where the highlights are as far as the issues that the present board and the past board have addressed.
All right, thank you. I'll show that on the screen again in a moment. We seem to be correlating towards some dates in mid-September. It looks like people prefer the afternoons, which hopefully will be cooled down a bit from the highs right now at about 4:00 PM. And so that's a couple of dates we potentially send out. I also have Brandon's map right here of locations zoomed out to the furthest possible level as a default. There we go. So a nice efficient route. It's a long tour. Yeah, we'll get our steps in for sure. And this is one that's broken into two parts.
Parts, right.
One of the big ones here that I think is really great about this is we'll be seeing a lot of the areas related to some traffic concerns, unfortunately excluding lower punch bowl, which is quite a distance from the rest of these. And potential locations for dog parks that they might want to request. And also just, also some sites where there've been concerns related to homelessness as well. So I think this is a great balance. So when you, when you're deciding raises at the end of the year, there's very good staff who put this together for you. But okay, is there anything else to add on this? Seeing none, I will go ahead and stop screen sharing. Thank you very much, Councilmember.
Thank you very much. And we'll follow up with you, Ian, in regards to setting the date up for next month.
Excellent. All right, filling in vacancies, we do have one vacancy right now for Sub District One. Did you receive any interest, Logan?
I did receive an email from someone, but I don't know their address. I believe they're online.
Okay, were they able to confirm their address?
They were. They were.
Great. Either yourself or if you're comfortable saying to me, I think one of us should follow up with the link in the agenda and maybe they'll all join us next meeting. And I'll put it higher in the agenda next time. Next up, additional roles and responsibilities of officers. I went ahead and compiled Elena's list and my list and then made the use of the language fairly consistent. Did anyone get a chance to look over the potential roles of officers? There are two areas that I highlighted that I think are areas of special concern. One, I did change for Secretary. Member Thomas Baldwin noted that it is not just the responsibility of the secretary to look over all of the minutes prior to the meeting. It's all of the responsibilities. What he intuited correctly, I intended to mean was prior to distribution. So I did change that. So they'd be required to read them about a week or two prior to the meeting and then give any feedback they see. And it's essentially a similar role, shortened timescale. And then secondarily, treasurer would still be required to put together a rough proposal to the board for intended use of funds by September 30th. We can consider pushing that back if we wanted. That means shortly after the next meeting, it would then be due for consideration for the following. Do we want to push that back? Do you want to keep that the same? Those are potential points of conversation. All right, do we have a motion at this time?
Got you. At next, next meeting and then follow up.
Oh, we did discuss it at last meeting and this was end the meeting prior.
Oh, all right. So you got a date?
For, oh, I would assume that we would just keep it what's listed because no one jumped to change anything.
Oh, okay.
You make a motion?
No, just a question. So the idea is there'll be a proposal next meeting and then proposal would be due by September 30th, which would mean just emailed to the board sometime between that meeting and September 30th. Okay, so it'll be discussed.
Good question. If anyone's raising their hand, unfortunately, I can't see it on my screen here. You're recognized at this time.
Chair, I move that the neighborhood, our neighborhood board amends or adds to our bylaws to add these additional duties to the officer roles.
All right, the motion. Is there a second? Thank you. Three seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to seek unanimous consent on this. Is anyone opposed or abstaining at this time? You're going to oppose or abstain?
Yes.
Okay. Logan, can you please lead us through a roll call?
Okay, so just to double check your verbiage on the motion, Thomas, you moved to add these to the bylaws, these additional roles for the officers.
Yes, the same document that is found in the Google Drive, that language, I would like added to the bylaws.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. I will go call now. Baldwin?
Hi.
Carson?
Hi.
Char?
Hi.
Gordon? Fujinaka? Kewanoo? Claim? Kojima?
Hi.
Laka Laka, Monopuna? Lee? Nakamoto? Park? Heck?
Hi.
Salassa?
Steelquist?
Hi.
Ross?
Hi.
Motion is adopted with a vote of nine, or nine ayes, no noes, no extension.
Yeah, great.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to appointment of O MPO representative, so the Wahoo MPO. There have been an email sent out to folks forwarded by Logan today. They're really eager to have new members from boards. Is anyone interested in serving in this position? Or any nominee? Oh, yes.
Didn't say when the meetings are held.
Very good point. Logan, do you have any information about when the meetings are held?
I don't know off the top of my head. Same as you guys, I would, the only way I follow that is by some of the board's monthly updates. I'm not actually sure. So.
Obviously, they have committees as well. Are you interested in potentially, oh, the page for when the meetings are held, they got 404. That's unfortunate. I found a participation calendar and nothing is listed. Yeah, it's just a list of all of this.
And they have taken three of the options. Seriously.
And I see older ones. So yeah, unfortunately, your guess is as good as mine. Any further discussion on this topic?
I would potentially be interested in serving.
Okay, that is a very fair point.
Yeah, I was a member of OMPO 15 years ago. I worked for them.
Okay, they are the Wahoan Transport Planning Organization. It is a private transportation program. And in Hawaii or Honolulu, this is Wahoan, Wahoan. It is, consists of the head of DTS, the head of DOT and an executive director. And then I think four city council and four senators. And what they do is they do planning to ask for federal money for new projects. So when we started the rail system, that had to get OMPO report to go to DTS.
And John, I'm going to jump in. It looks like it's the first Wednesday of every month is the Citizens Advisory Committee.
Yeah.
And it's a 2:30 to 3:30 typically.
Yeah. And it's lots of federal regulations, but that's what's locally employed. So it's an interesting group.
Okay, so that's the note for when they meet?
Yeah, I see a 2 o'clock is what I see on the site that I have found.
Interesting. So between 2:00 and 2:30 is when it starts?
Yeah, I'll pass.
Okay.
It would be good if somebody went.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is a good group.
Yeah. Okay, I'll go.
You'll help out?
Yeah.
Oh, fantastic. Okay.
I'll go and talk. I used to know all the people there.
Great. Well, we'd be really lucky to have you there then. So for the note, my understanding for this is the chair gets your point, but can be overruled by the board. So that's my understanding. So I'd like to appoint John Steelquist to represent the board here. Are there any objections? Hearing none, thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you for joining us.
Yeah. I'm going to be busier than I want.
I hear a lot of retirees say that.
Yeah.
They just get a lot busier.
Time to make my report.
You're up in just one moment.
Okay.
Committee reports and other committee business. First up is homelessness. Richard Kewanoo and Ken Peck. Is Richard Kewanoo with us? Ken, were you able to get in touch with Richard? Ken, were you able to get in touch with Richard?
Unfortunately, no.
Okay. All right, well, I'll try to send an email introduction to both of you. I was talking to Richard at some point about that. I guess something maybe fell through on all of it. But I'll send an email follow-up.
Sure. No, I only got a Google Doc yesterday, so I was playing catch-up.
Understood. All right, reorganizing committee, John Steelquist.
Okay. They had a meeting three weeks ago, said they ought to have another meeting. And everybody get out and do stuff. It was a very interesting group. It was about...
Which group is this, sir?
This is the proposed group.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah, to change and improve the neighborhood board system. Okay, there were about eight neighborhood board chairs. The one that was organizing it was White Chief Chair Armstrong. And he said, the system is broken. We need to action it. Do all kinds of things. Okay, if you remember, we had a mayor called Jeremy Harris. That was, that was the golden days of neighborhood boards. Because he actually would, would give the boards a committee and then they would decide on something and then he'd do it. It was amazing. He would be on the board that, that year and a half before it all fell apart. But anyway, so that's it. So neighborhood boards can be very important. History, neighborhood boards were started by Frank Fossey because he wanted to get some input. Right? And he kind of ran them, but he always kept his hands off. So then the neighborhood plan came out. Tom and I worked on that, at least two additions back the last century. So, yeah. So anyway, so they're proposing to have another meeting, which will be tomorrow. And some of them want to do great, terrible things and some of them don't want to do other. So I will go there and participate, but I'm not gonna be rattle rouser. I'm not gonna pour any barricades or require any personal weapons or anything like that, yeah.
Okay, understood. Yeah. A reminder, so Armstrong did come speak to our board and I've asked Logan to forward a reminder about that meeting.
Yeah, so you got a meeting tomorrow at one in, at a church in Kowano, I think.
Sounds good. Yeah, I'll be there as well.
Yeah. Anyway, so anyway, it's happening. It's not gonna be a great new thing, but it may be a good avenue for us to get some help to change our board readiness. Yeah. So we can approach on that point of view, but changing the whole system. We don't have a mayor that's gonna do that, so that's a nonstarter right off.
All right. Well, thank you so much for your report. Our next item, I'll skip the dissolving existing committees because I can assume you don't want to dissolve yours.
No.
Establishment of additional committees. Do we want to create a transportation committee at this time?
That's a good idea.
Yes, it is. All right, we'll move on then to board membership. We have only two members who have joined the neighborhood boards. We have Ken Peck and Thomas Baldwin. Ken, remind me, you wanted to join the reorganizing committee, is that correct?
Yes, I wanted to help facilitate that if possible, whoever was...
Good. Great. And Thomas Baldwin wanted to join that and the homelessness committee meeting. Logan, remind me, do you have to vote to add people to board to? Okay, do we have form?
I do not.
We just lost one. That's unfortunate. We cannot have our committees up there in the meantime. Okay, in which case I recognize, I recognize Tom Heinrich at this time.
Thank you, Chair. Just to add and clarify what John Steelquist was speaking to a moment ago. In today's, this is Thursday, August seventeen, Honolulu Start advertiser on page B one and continuing on six.
So Tom, I can post all that to the Facebook and I did re-forward that to all our board members as well. Was there something in addition to, to add to that? Sorry. I ask for the sake of time.
Yes, keeping in mind that the chat is not available to the viewer. The key here on this meeting that is referred to as pulled together by Mr. Armstrong, who's on the downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board, is that the meeting takes place not tomorrow, not on Friday, but on Saturday, August nineteenth at 1:00 PM at the New Life Church at eleven fifty-two Smith Street. Okay, so point of clarification on that. Thanks.
Thank you very much. That is very helpful. And I just posted that to the chat as well. Thank you very much. All right, so if you don't have any forum to vote for a membership, we'll move on to announcements. The next meeting is Thursday, September twenty-first at 6:00 PM, Makiki District Park and via WebX. Broadcast can be viewed on Alelo Focus forty-nine at 9:00 PM on the first Friday of the month and again on the third Sunday at 3:00 PM. For social media, you can follow us on facebook.com/makikinnb, the letters NB standing for Neighborhood Board. And you can view our archive via the Neighborhood Commission Office website or by clicking any of the links in our agendas. With that said, is there any motion to adjourn? So moved. Thank you so much for volunteering.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you. Well, hi, everyone.
Yeah. Have a good night.
I didn't think we were gonna get anyone without you.